Say, a springboard step for the community with the veteran community, especially in moving forward with an advisory council coming up with development ideas, policy ideas that ultimately could lead, because I mean even if you're talking about. You think that's going to happen immediately, you're still going to continue to use the Lions Club, the library, you know, whatever facilities available to you, or city facilities for that matter, as you become a integral part of the city. So, I think moving forward, it would be a matter of just putting together a resolution that would be passed by the council and laying out the guidelines and the rules and mission statements and all that, so we can formalize something in our next meeting that then we can vote on.
The Equity Commission, we were literally inventing, like literally, that's what, we looked all over, they, no one had done that before. This people have done. So, you know, we have guidelines, we have things what we can look at and emphasize from that.
Yeah, there's a template for making this happen, right? You guys can help us.
I had a question. By forming this advisory council, does that, does that mean that they automatically get to use city space as we speak about the future City Hall and so forth?
No.
Well, there'll be an advisory body. If I know veterans, who will be a largely self-organizing advisory body. I'm not sure that we need to step in and appoint them so much as we need to recognize what they're doing and give them some kind of official status or semi-official status with the city. We don't need to tell the veterans what they're doing.
Well, they need to tell us.
These guys obviously look at.
Well, we need to do.
I'm sorry.
They need to tell us what we need.
Exactly. Exactly.
Oh, yeah, that's what we'll get to.
And they have seen this kind of thing in other cities. They've obviously got go-bys. You know, I'm perfectly happy to listen to them self-organize and.
So, I'm sorry, self-organized, does that mean not city-supported?
It doesn't, no. We can say not city-directed.
So, when I hear that, what I think is.
City-supported but not city-directed.
Yeah, if there are seven members on the board, I don't know that we're going to appoint seven members. I think we're going to ask you to nominate the seven members who you want on the board, because they're going to be a whole lot better at selecting the right folks.
We could look at how the other cities, I know Austin appoints the, each council member gets one.
Each council member gets one.
Yeah, that's right. Austin, that's how it's always been.
But, yeah, I think I'd defer.
But they have space. Austin does. Yeah. We could come back.
Yeah, I see this as a combination.
I'm sorry, I want to.
Going to the committee.
You have questions?
You do. I just, I want to be able to write the resolution, so I'm hearing a lot of different ways. So, maybe, maybe a lunch and learn, I'm trying to think of when can I really, because once you make it a city council-appointed, we're now into open meetings, somebody keep, there's more, we record meetings, it's a, so if it's, so I'm just making sure that I write this resolution correctly. So, I'm hearing a few different things. Would you all mind if we did a lunch and learn, where we can sit around a table and really kind of hash that out, or do you really want something in the next meeting?
I think that's great, a lunch and learn.
I think a lunch and learn and have these gentlemen here and whoever else they think would be appropriate to be part of that conversation.
Some the next month, that's cool. Yeah.
And I would suggest that, looking back on Equity Commission and to Caesar's comments earlier, rather than just establishing a commission, I would say that we solicit some feedback in this lunch and learn to figure out what those objectives should be.
The charge.
Right? What is this commission expected to do, their charge, so to speak? So, that, so that, so that we have that already defined, because I think the Equity Commission that we created spent a year trying to figure out their pillars and more than, more than a year, trying to figure out what they were supposed to do.
Right.
And so, with feedback from y'all and from anyone else that you choose that has an interest in this, I think helping us to codify what this commission is supposed to do would give you a springboard into accepting that mission and moving forward.
I think that's a great idea, Councilman.
I don't think that'll take us very long, Jim. We're in the military. It'll take you years.
We do it next month.
So, let's schedule that for November 18th.
Lunch and learn here.
Perfect.
All right.
We'll feed you.
Right before Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
We'll feed you.
Take your time. And thank you for your service and welcome home.
Jim, thank you.
Yes, sir. So, we are in executive session regarding government, in accordance with government code, section 551 dot 072, deliberation regarding real property and section 551 dot 071 consultation with attorney related to downtown East Development. We're in executive session.
That's a sentence for your ass. I didn't.
You did it on purpose, though.
Really?
I'm upset about last meeting.
Yeah, no, we should deal with the baby room.
Um, we keep it, gives me one.
Where can you get baby rooms?
So, we're back from executive session. No action was taken. Uh, the work session is adjourned. And, whoa, we're on time. So, I'd like to call to order the regular city council meeting at 7:00 PM this day, October 22nd. If you would please stand for the pledge and stay standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their government for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
You may be seated. Our next item is public comment. In accordance with the Texas Attorney General's opinion, any public comment that is made on an item that is not on the published final agenda will only be heard by city council. No further action, discussion, deliberation, or comment will be made by city council. Each person providing public comment will be limited to three minutes. I have two individuals. Melissa Call. Love the hair.
Now, it's the third of the United States' flag. I'll have the red and white pretty soon here, so. Good evening, city council, mayor, and city manager. Hope you're doing well tonight. Um, for the record, my name is Melissa Call, and I'm a 29-year resident of Flugerville, president of the Flugerville Arts Council, former Deutschenfest Entertainment Committee member, current member of the American Legion Auxiliary Post 154, current member of First United Methodist Church, wife of a 26-year Army veteran. I assist with ava-fest.org, and I'm a library cardholder. I'm also a co-founder of the Skydome Stage Company, a professional stage company that we've begun. Um, I currently have a month-long art show at the Flugerville Library that features all U.S. military veteran artists. It begins on November 1 through December 1st. The event runs, um, the month long, and our librarian, Jennifer, is a veteran daughter and wife, and has graciously agreed to promote this event through the City of Library channel, so I'm thrilled about that. Um, we also have a currently, currently have a veteran bands concert scheduled at Flugerville, First United Methodist Church for Sunday, November 17, 4 to 6, free and family-friendly. There's two separate bands, and it's a sing-along. It's gonna be all Americana, it's really cool, all guitar bands, and, and, um, and Doug, you got your Susie, didn't you? Yeah, I've heard that from you one time, I've had it over and over again, so got it back to you. Um, I sang the National Anthem at the DAV Legal Clinic, and when I did, I was approached by Glenn Towery, who's president and co-founder of ava-fest.org, and he's a veteran, and he said, "I'd like you to sing the National Anthem at our opening ceremony." And I said, "Well, you actually didn't hear me sing, 'cause you just walked in the door." And he said, "Well, my second command did." And I said, "Good." So, now I've plugged in with ava-fest.org. It is a multi-city, multi-event festival from mid-October to mid-November, and it totally supports veterans in the arts. And so, we have theater, we have dance, we have music. We just attended a film festival, and it was fantastic. And so, it honors all our veterans in the arts. Um, it draws attention to visitors to Flugerville, so we are preparing for AvaFest 2025, and I definitely want to bring a whole bunch of veterans to Flugerville. So, I think that's all I gotta talk about.
Thank you very much. Tracy Dockard, Doctor, I'm sorry.
Hello, my name is Tracy Doctor. Ladies and gentlemen of the city council, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I stand before you to highlight an invaluable resource to our community, our Youth Baseball and Softball League. This league is more than just a series of games. It's a vital part of our community, fabric promoting teamwork, discipline, and a love for the sport among young people. However, to truly harness the potential of this organization, I urge you to establish a partnership with the Youth Baseball and Softball League. Engaging with our, our young athletes can foster a sense of belonging and responsibility that extends beyond the baseball field. It can instill leadership skills, encourage physical fitness, and create lifelong friendships. By reaching out, you can provide, uh, critical support, whether through funding, facilities, or mentorship programs. This collaboration would not only enhance the league, but also enrich our community, ensuring our children have the resources that they need to thrive both in sports and in life. Moreover, this relationship can open avenues for community events like tournaments, clinics, which all could draw, which all could draw families to our fields, and in return, boost local businesses. Let's not miss the opportunity to invest in our youth, who are, after all, the future of our city. In conclusion, I ask you to please prioritize reaching out to the Youth Baseball and Softball League, and together, we can build a stronger, more connected community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else wishing to make public comment at this time? Okay, thank you. Um, moving on to Core A, um, is our proclamations. I'm sorry.
I'm privileged, privileged this evening to present a proclamation declaring, um, November 11th, 2024 is Veterans' Day in the city of Flugerville. In 1975, Congress voted to make November 11th Veterans' Day in honor of those veterans who have served in the armed forces. The city of Flugerville, along with millions of other Americans, recognize and respect the veterans in our community and nationwide for the many sacrifices and contributions for our freedom and security. Both men and women of the armed forces continue to be an inspiration to all of us through their display of courage, leadership, commitment, and service to their country. We will always remember and pay homage to our military community, both active and inactive, for their contribution, dedication, and commitment to the cause of freedom for all of us. I proclaim November 11th as Veterans' Day in the city of Flugerville, and I have members of the American Legion Post 154 here to accept the proclamation. If you'll come forward, sir. American Legion. Just one.
Dude, Doug, Doug, he's got like three more.
I'll get my, uh, my standing mitts.
Okay. The city of Flugerville wants to recognize the way many family caregivers find themselves quickly to thrust into the role of caregiver following a healthy health crisis or change in the condition of an older parent or relative, often without the knowledge or access to available services and support. Caregivers work long days and spend countless hours to meet and anticipate the needs of their loved ones, often facing challenges that can seem impossible to navigate. These acts of love, commitment, and compassion enable their family members to receive the support they need. We recognize the important role of the family caregivers and thank them for their invaluable and instrumental care they provide. I proclaim November as Family Caregiver Month in the city of Flugerville. Jennifer Scott, Director of Aging Programs, is here to accept the proclamation. Jennifer? Maybe, not here? Okay, sorry.
All right, I'm not gonna lie.
We will mail it.
Who did? Yeah. Yeah, Brooklyn's like that, too. Brooklyn will just clap at anything.
Are we okay? Municipal courts play a significant role in preserving public safety and promoting quality of life in Texas. Many people come in contact with municipal courts. Then, all other Texas courts combine, and public impression of the Texas judicial system is largely dependent upon the public's experience in a municipal court. The city of Flugerville is committed to the notion that our legal system is based on the principle that an independent, fair, and competent judiciary will interpret and apply the laws that govern us, and that judges and court personnel should comply with the law and act in a manner that promotes public confidence and the integrity and impartiality of the judiciary. I proclaim November 4th through the 8th as Municipal Court Week in the city of Flugerville in recognition of the fair and impartial justice offered to our citizens by the Municipal Court of Flugerville. And we have the municipal court staff here to accept this proclamation. Change is constant and affects all cities and towns. Community planning can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people work, live, and play. The full benefits of planning requires public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation. The month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America. The celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of the members of the Planning and Zoning Commission and other citizen planners who have contributed to their time and expertise to the improvement of our city. I proclaim October as Community Planning Month in the city of Flugerville. Jonathan Kaufman, Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission, is here to accept the proclamation.
Is someone keeping track of Doug's steps?
Okay. I was like, where'd you go? You look great.
What happened there?
They're trying to get to...
Like the machine does some Adderall or something.
Planning and Development Services?
That's a lot of planning up there. And, having said that, uh, we're about to conduct a presentation on the Planning and Development Services Department. Robert Polanco, floor is yours.
All right, good evening, mayor and council. Just gonna give you guys a quick presentation on behalf of the Planning and Development Services, which comprises the Billing Department, Filling Inspectors, Planners, and Administrative Staff. Kind of overview of what happened in fiscal year 2023. Here we go. Here's the staff as a whole. Uh, missing a couple of people in there, um, but generally, this is our, our staff and our mascot.
I think you say the dog has a badge, right?
He does, actually. Given, he was given one by, uh, people in culture.
I assume the dog is management?
He probably, he probably...
Shots fired. Y'all see, I have a...
The murmur from the crowd.
Uh, closer picture of the staff as a whole. On the left, you see the, uh, Billing Department, myself and my inspectors, David Jones, Jeff Crowe, Michael Lacy. In the middle, you have our administrative team, Susie, Rosie, DeeDee, uh, Kim, and who did I miss? That's everyone. Katie, there you go. Then on the, of course, on the right, everyone knows, Jeremy, Aaron, Michael, and Kristen. We do have a new member of the planning staff. He was here for the picture, but he wasn't pictured here. He just started this week. Uh, FY24 applications, these numbers are reflective of the planning process. We've seen a growth in rezonings, subdivisions, and site development applications over fiscal year 23. Happy to answer any questions as I'm going along. FY24 application trends, uh, we continue, continue to see growth in development, uh, year over year. Here are the trends for subdivision and site development. It's gonna be particularly important on the, um, left there, the subdivision applications. You'll see them going up, and that's gonna have an impact on my department directly a little bit later on.
And Robert, can you define subdivision?
Single-family, residential primarily, um, I guess, perhaps, uh, well, I'm not the expert in this side of it.
No, that, that's, makes sense.
That sounds good, but yeah, 'cause 43, dude.
Robert, can I back up just, uh, on one slide there? The annexations, uh, is, is quite low, and I know it's been much higher in years past legislatures intervened. I had a young woman, uh, today, uh, asked me, "When is the city gonna annex my neighborhood?" Can you explain to her what's going on and why we can't just annex her neighborhood?